I hereby call to order this committee the whole meeting. It's Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is eight eighteen. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 There's still.
Here.
Great, thank you. I seek a motion to approve the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, committee the whole in executive session minutes.
I move to approve the District Thirty-nine Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting that was held on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minute? Okay, seeing none, will the, uh, do we need to do a roll call? Can we just, oh, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's begin with Facility Development Committee. I turn the meeting over to FEC Chair Ellen Strohmeyer. Can you hold on Ellen for one second? I can't hear her, can you? Can you guys hear?
You're not gonna hear through this system?
Okay, sorry.
So just beep up. We're doing it for the benefit, not just of at the table, but for that device right there on the table.
Okay, clearly I registered, thank you. Hello. Thank you Ellen.
You're welcome. President Fabe. We have a summer construction update. Mackenzie, Ramona, and WJHS, uh, I'm, um, those three schools, sorry. Uh, Joe Papa Nicholas will update the board on how the Ramona and Mackenzie projects have been going so far. Corey will update the board on some work, um, on some work projects completed at WJHS over spring break in preparation for the large summer project. And, um, some additional asbestos work at Mackenzie has been identified and details of that work will be shared with the board. So I think I will turn this over to Joe.
Sure, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jerome.
So we've been, uh, we've been at it about three weeks. I'll start with Mackenzie. Uh, our first big, uh, our first big goal was to relocate some existing utilities. Um, it was, it was a mix of site demolition and this relocation of these utilities, all in an effort to start foundation work. So, um, it went, it went extremely smooth. It was a tremendous amount of work, um, that had been completed that first week, um, which all led to, um, foundation excavation and then ultimately placing the foundation. So as we sit right now in Mackenzie, the foundation has been, um, completed. Uh, we're in the process of actually backfilling, um, right now, um, which will then move into underground work, um, this week and then ultimately our concrete slab, uh, for the, for the addition will be placed by the end of this week. Um, everything's weather permitting, um, knock on wood. Uh, so far, we haven't lost a day due to the weather since we started. Um, so we'll take it. Um, just looking out ahead at Mackenzie, um, we have steel arriving next month, um, probably in the middle of next month, so that's sort of our goal. Um, once this concrete slab gets placed, hopefully the end of this week, the mason will start running up his, uh, his block walls in preparation of that steel next week. Um, over at Ramona, um, a lot of the same types of scopes. Um, we did not have any major, uh, utility relocates that first week. Um, so we've been focusing on, on both additions, um, at Ramona. Again, site demolition took place, foundations are in. Um, we actually did get the slab engraved place last Friday at Ramona. So we've had the weekend for it to cure. Um, it'll cure today. Um, the mason will start running up his, his block work, um, this week at Ramona. On the north side, um, the north side addition, uh, foundations are also complete. We're gonna start backfilling. Um, we have a little bit of underground up there as well. Um, and we'll look to place that concrete slab engraved by the end of the week. So in essence, uh, next week, it'll be masonry work at both sites, uh, in preparation of steel delivery next month. And this all leads to hopefully having an enclosed addition, um, come June and we're left with essentially, uh, an interior buildout for the summer to go along with the, the summer critical renovation work. So that, that's kind of high level where we're at. Everything's on schedule. Again, we haven't missed a day since we started three weeks ago at both sites. Um, from an unforeseen standpoint, um, very minimal, um, which is great. So we did anticipate some poor soil at both sites. Um, so we made provisions within the bid to accommodate that, to avoid, um, any post-bid impacts that would, uh, bite into the contingency. So, so all has been, uh, all is going extremely well. Does anybody have any questions, um, for me at either site?
Joe, did you run into that soil issue at both sites?
Mm-hmm, we did. And we also ran into the original roadway, uh, behind Mackenzie that used to travel right by the main, the main building, uh, coming from the alleyway. So as we were excavating, the entire paved roadway, the pavers, the curbs, and the stumps from the parkway trees were a hundred percent intact. So that was kind of interesting. So at some point in time, somebody made the decision, let's just, uh, throw a bunch of bad soil over the existing road and just leave the road, cut the trees down, leave the stumps, and that was that.
All they worked like forty years ago?
I would think at least.
Well, that was interesting. Well, thank you, Joe, for the update. Any questions? Thank you, Joe.
And then as far as the junior high, um, contractors are verifying as much as they can in the field, um, just in preparation of, uh, of our June start at the junior high. It worked out well with, um, at least initiating the equipment orders for the junior high with the unit vents and the chiller, so, so that worked out really well. Um, we don't have any concerns with, uh, with lead time.
All right, um, any questions on all, any of that? Do you wanna give any updates on?
I don't have anything to add. Anything relates to those two things, but I'll jump to the next part if, if, uh, Joe is, Joe is finished.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, so I just wanted to briefly share about some of the asbestos work that's been occurring at both buildings. I just wanna, I'll share my screen so people can see exactly what I'm talking about. Okay, so first we'll just take a look at, um, junior high. So, uh, thankfully, we have a very proactive, um, construction team and after, as we got close to opening the bids, there was some realization that with the design plans, there may, may, there was likely to be some asbestos abatement that needed to be done. And as it relates to a project like this, one of the kind of things that drives how much needs to be done is what does the contractor that's gonna be working in the ceilings feel needs to be done? So once, we, we had opened those bids in March, our, um, asbestos abatement team met with the contractor, they walked through the, all the rooms that they were gonna be in. And if we look on the right side of this floor plan, um, there's a blue hallway I'm kind of hovering around has the rooms one twenty-seven through one thirty-three. That is where, um, from, from a work standpoint, they were able to seal off that whole hallway. And from our perspective, because the construction window over the summer is tight for that project, they were able to do that over spring break when no one was in the, when, uh, you know, no students and staff were, were in the building. So they were able to successfully get that completed, um, which will allow the project during the summer to move a lot quicker and smoother. Then over at Mackenzie, um, if you look on the right-hand side, there's a, near the letters N and M, there's office suite of one oh five, which is going to be refigured. That whole area, um, needs asbestos abatement. We knew about that. That'll happen after the school year is over. But the new part, at least that recently came to, to our attention, um, as we, um, renovate classroom one hundred and expand the cafeteria, there's probably a pretty good chance some of the stuff that's attached to the walls, uh, there may be some asbestos work that go behind it. And then one of the other smaller things that, you know, we do each summer, um, whether it's replace tile or flooring or paint, um, you know, things that we do in small amounts at, at a lot of different buildings in typical summer. One of the things that's unique about Mackenzie is, as you look at the left-hand side of, of this, this map, the entire second floor has asbestos everywhere. So the current construction, the current layout of that second floor is there's tile, carpet on top of the tile. And as I, uh, talked with Dana about, you know, their, their building's request to start moving towards replacing that, um, the carpet that's on top of the tile goes back to ninety-seven and ninety-eight. So, um, so we brought out our asbestos team and started developing a plan. So we will, this is something that, just from like a safety standpoint of being able to seal off, you know, smaller areas, make it manageable for, for that team, and then have our people, you know, move everything around and still be able to get all their work done. This will probably take over, um, multiple summers, but that is something that we will start on the south end of the building, the very bottom where that green hallway is, tackle the hallway and the, uh, couple the classrooms. So I just wanted to make the board aware.
I just jumped in. Um, in terms of asbestos, um, it is contained under the tile, under the carpet, in the flooring area, um, not located in other areas.
No. Not, not, there, if anything, i- in most of our, uh, spaces, if there was addition, anywhere else, it would probably be something behind a, like a wall if they were to do that. But in our particular case, you know, one of the reasons that we would go ahead and do this is that if they were to pull up the carpet, the chances that they rip up the tile when they, is significantly high and then once it's exposed, you really need to, uh, you know, have that, be a controlled environment. So that's why we're proactively having the abatement team go ahead and tackle that.
And just to be clear for everyone, the worry about asbestos isn't when it's contained and untouched, it's when you want to uncover it or move it or, um, uh, do anything disruptive. That's when the abatement process needs to start. So there are no worries with it right now, but if we do want to replace the flooring, that would then require abating the asbestos abatement.
What are we looking at replacing it with as we replace it? Are we looking at replacing tile and carpet or carpet?
So the request from the school, if you walk through the first floor of Mackenzie, the hallway is, uh, VCT composite tile. The request is now, so the, right now, the entire second floor is carpet. The hallways would be tile, anywhere around like a drinking fountain, there would be like slip-resistant tile. And then the classrooms would be, uh, carpet squares. And then usually if a, if a classroom has a sink or, um, you know, bathroom in it, then there would be tile there, the, the VCT is well there. And one of the reasons that we have, uh, would like to do the carpet tiles or carpet squares is that going forward, if a particular spot in the room either gets damaged or you need to replace it, you just, you could just rip up a couple of squares, replace it versus if you had it, you know, rooms being carpeted with one big roll. Um, some of the things I've seen in my career, you get a bubble, people cut the bubble, then they tape it down. You know, there's no easy way, if you're not doing carpet squares in the classroom, to, to easily fix that, so.
I don't know if this is a question for Colby or for Sanders, but, um, because they tend to go through the materials?
Um, we, so for that, we work with, like, for the, like, for the, some of the smaller projects, that's handled by our, um, Director of Operations and Maintenance and then with, directly with the contractor.
Can we, are we replacing with, um, environmentally, um, safe, uh, like environmentally conscious materials? So carpets that is carpet or tile is either recycled or green carpet or?
I don't have the specific answer on.
Can we look into that?
I can ask them what they.
Um, you know, the, if we're gonna do this over a long period of time, it would be nice to be, to go green with this and healthy with no, with carpets that don't emit any kind of toxins. I mean, if we're gonna replace, um, asbestos with something else, we should replace it, i- i- in my opinion, we should be looking at replacing it with, you know, non-toxic materials and also hopefully something that's recycled and, you know, healthy for the environment in general, um, if we can. Yes, it, you know, we strive to be a greener school, the, and school district, so. Any other questions from anybody else or thoughts on this?
I, I agree with your point. I think it's a good point.
Um, and actually, yeah, that's it for facilities, so, um, back to President Fabe.
Awesome. Next, we have School Finance Committee. Oh, wait, shall we just say goodbye to everybody?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a great week.
Yep, have a great week. Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Great, so now we're turning it over to the School Finance Committee. I turn the meeting over to FEC Chair, Mr. Caesar Ready.
Thank you, President Fabe. Um, I, I think Corey is going to talk about, um, federal funds.
Sure. So what we just wanted to update the board about is there was, in March, there was another round of federal money geared at helping, among many things, uh, school districts. So each one has their own acronym, uh, in the school realm. They call it S R one, S R two, S R three, just to keep it simple. Um, when you read stuff in the paper, you'll probably see a different acronym. The first one that goes back to last March, um, we have spent, that was about eighty thousand. We had to share a little bit of that with, um, the, some of the private schools in our community. That money has been spent. Then S R two, which was passed over the, around the winter break time, um, in the application module that we would apply to ISB with, the amount is three hundred and fourteen thousand for, for District Thirty-nine. Um, since that shows up in the application module, that's a pretty, it should be a solid amount. When I read through the spending requirements, uh, it looks like we have until September of twenty-three to spend that money. And it is really, really flexible on what, what we would get reimbursed for. Um, so it's, which is a good thing for school districts because not everybody may have the same need. Um, so as an administrative team, we're working, working through those details. And then the biggest one, and the reason we wanted to bring it up today, S R three, our allocation preliminarily from ISB is seven hundred and five thousand. That's based upon about five, about a five billion dollar allocation to Illinois for, for schools. Embedded within that seven hundred and five thousand, there is a requirement that at least twenty percent of the money goes towards learning loss. So for us, that's a hundred and forty-ish, a hundred and forty thousand. And then there hasn't been much, since this is so new, there hasn't been much other guidance. The actual module that we would log in and see all the requirements, um, ISB has told us that won't go live until July first. So there's still a lot of details, but that one, that particular grant has an end date of September of two thousand and twenty-four. So it's not as if you got it, you gotta use it in one year. It does give districts, um, you know, seven hundred thousand is certainly a lot of money. Other districts are getting several millions of dollars or tens of millions of dollars. So, um, you know, for districts to use it wisely, it, they're giving us a lot of time to plan and be thoughtful about that. So we'll have more details as we get more information over the next several months. But we do plan to try and connect that seven hundred and five thousand to our strategic planning process since we're, we're getting, getting going with that this week, um, make sure that all that's aligned. Does anyone have any questions about any of those?
Just for background, the, um, the formula, as much as it can be understood, and I understand there's lots of, lots of gray areas in there, is based on the number of kids identified. I mean, what's, what's the base?
What's the allocation method? In each of the ones that I've seen, the primary, the, the allocation method has been low income. So what, the, the big spreadsheet that I saw for when that ISB released the S R three was, there was a column that said, what percentage of the low-income kids in the entire state does D thirty-nine have? And then you get that times, you know, five billion or whatever. So that's how they, so districts that have, you know, well north of fifty percent, they're the ones that are gonna get ten, probably tens of millions of dollars. So that is, that is the primary driving factor.
Yeah, we, we run just under two percent in that category, just about, right?
It's a little higher than that, but yes, it's, it's pretty low in our, in our community.
No, just, uh, like I said, some of the schools, you multiply that number by fifty.
So make sure I understand, so we're still trying to figure out what the restrictions are?
For the, for the latest round?
With a bigger number?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they got, they're, other, you know, really the, the only thing I could really definitively offer that I've seen in a lot of places is the twenty percent towards learning loss. I suspect that the remaining eighty percent will be really flexible, similar to the other stuff. You know, as you can imagine, I would think that, you know, other, like, more hot, districts with a lot of low income may have some facility needs or equipment needs or just different things that we've already tackled as a district. So I, I expect massive amounts of flexibility within that grant.
John, what we're being told is that the application will be open sometime this summer. So it's not until the application comes out that we really have a good understanding of what those limitations will be. That twenty percent is the one element that most superintendents at least have heard a lot about, that you have to spend at least twenty percent on learning loss recovery and social emotional support, so. But we are really excited that, uh, we might be able to tie this directly to the strategic plan and some of the goals that are identified there. And the opportunity to use it over three years really gives us some sustainability of impact there, um, although our dollars, to Frank's point, they're certainly not nearly what some districts will see, um, valuable dollars nonetheless, that we can really target and earmark for those improvement efforts.
Well, in any, I would say, I, I share your excitement, actually, I'm really excited. Not because of the seven hundred thousand, that's always nice to get, but, um, really because I think we probably identify areas where we are, um, where we need, where we can do the most to improve what we're doing in the schools, right? So the pandemic kind of helps expose some areas where, hey, you know, maybe we can do better here, maybe these are the shaky areas that we can, so I, it's a, it's a really nice forcing function to have to go through and say, okay, let's think about where we had learning loss, because those are probably areas where we had good investments to make already. So I, I think it's really exciting. But I agree with Frank, you do the strategic process. That's perfect. Frank, did you wanna add something? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Uh, no, it, it was related to cash flow. I mean, for, for our district, this money is relatively in the noise, so I was gonna ask about, you know, do we have to, can we spend it all in one year? Do we have to spread it out? But from a cash flow standpoint, it doesn't really matter, so we don't have to spend any time on that.
And one of the challenges always with salaries like these is that, um, once you spend them, you, you need to plan that they won't be there indefinitely. So, um, it is good practice to plan for a sustained expenditure there so that you can see the impact of those dollars being spent rather than one quick shot in the arm that is in the long term. So, um, we, we really do hope to be able to identify some of those three-year plans for implementation.
Thank you, Karen. Back to you, President Fabe.
Thank you. We will now move on to strategy items. Um, the strategy, uh, I turn the meeting over to Strategy Chair, Mark Steen.
Thank you very much. And we have two items today. One is our strategy update, and we were just talking about our strategy plan. And then we'll have a metrics update. And I think for the strategy update, we're going to Katie Lee.
We just wanted to, um, update the board on the progress we've made so far in the strategic plan, uh, planning process. And so, um, the initial meetings, um, were with the core team, which is the district administrators. And, um, I was with our consultant, and so those two readyness meetings have been completed, which told us the direction that we need to go as far as preparation on the backend. One of which is the stakeholder awareness communication. So we have utilized our email system, obviously with our families and parents within District Thirty-nine, our principals for our staff, as well as, um, Carrie's weekly communications to staff and family as well. Uh, for the community at large, um, tapped into some of the emails and contacts that the CRC was able to compile for us, as well as the village was able to provide, all of the businesses that are, um, in our area, uh, their email addresses. So we communicated out in multiple ways. There are two community newsletters, WOEMET, uh, there's a WOEMET newsletter and a Glenview focused one because we do have families in Glenview. And so we have been posting on there as well, an awareness and also the survey went out in that, um, in that, or through those communications. One other thing that we did was create a, uh, landing page, which after I go through this list, I'd like to show you, um, on the screen. Um, that, that is where all of the information will be stored. Um, and so many people can, anyone who wants to can access that page and find the information that we are, as a team, going to be going through, as well as some background information about the process. So I will share that with you. So all the meeting dates and times are established. Um, tomorrow is our kickoff with our orientation meeting. And so, um, that has been communicated out to all of the, uh, members of the full team. We were approximately forty-seven, and I believe that Lisa and Amy has received, um, my email about that. Um, and then the other pieces is for future meetings, but we are working on this on the backend, um, here. So one is a perception survey, which goes to all stakeholders, so community at large, identifying as businesses or families with no children in the district. Uh, we have communities within that parents, families, um, teachers, administrators, staff, all staff of District Thirty-nine, and then of course, our students. Uh, we are, we've elected to survey fourth through eighth grade, um, for that population. Um, so, and it's, and it's actually, um, a lot of data's coming in, so people are responding. Uh, as of this morning, we have about two hundred and seven from staff, um, five hundred sixty-four from parents and families, a thousand three hundred three from students, uh, fourth through eighth. I think it's primarily actually our five eight campus that has done that. So we're making sure that our elementary's will also do, and they have time because it's not due until the twenty-third or twenty-first. And then the community, we have forty. So we're trying really hard, but the community at large is a little bit more of a challenge to try to reach. But we do have businesses and also homeowners, um, that do not have children out of the forty that's represented. And that's, that's really all. So let me take a moment here. And on the homepage of WOEMET District Thirty-nine, uh, you will notice here at the very top in the recent news, and it'll stay there, it'll be pinned to the top. Um, that is where, um, anyone who is interested could access the webpage with all of the material. And then when you click on this link, which I'm just gonna go to the tab, this is where the landing page comes, lives, and this is the information that is provided. So then a process in general, our current strategic plan, the schedule of meetings, as well as all of our team members. And then if you scroll down, after every meeting, all reference documents, all materials, all resources, everything we use as a team will be posted there. So anyone can go and follow along if they wish. And that's it all. I can answer questions if you have any?
Questions from board members? Yeah, Frank?
For the community at large, um, I don't know if I missed it or, um, if it's, um, background, but since I don't have a, a child in the school district, I don't, I don't remember receiving anything, um, related to this. anything related to this. So how was the community at large being contacted?
Yes, Frank, that's actually, that was, that's one of the challenges that we have is outside, because we have access to emails for the communities within. And so for the community at large, we chose two very public newsletters, and I guess if you receive them or pay attention to all of that, you might have seen it, but it's easily to be missed as well, I suppose. But there's a Willmet newsletter and a Glenview newsletter. That's not from us, it's from the community. So I'm happy to, and I apologize, but I'm happy to forward that answer, since obviously we know who you are. But I think that's another thing we need to do, is tap into, you know, how we can get it out to everyone. The businesses was a little bit easier for us, just because the village has a list of every business, and so we were able to push it out that way. So I apologize, but we're gonna, we'll continue to improve on that part. I don't know if you received the newsletters, like the Willmet newsletter or the community association?
Yeah, I, I get that, but, you know, it's, it's a fairly long newsletter, I skimmed through it, it's not highlighted super, and frankly, even though this is something that I deal with, I didn't find it. So it's, you know, it's always hard to get a hold of that group of people, but, and the forty responses is an indicator that we haven't found that group of people yet, but it does represent seventy percent of the taxpayers, so we need to, to keep working on that. As a, as a side note to that, or a personal note to that, I need to get what parents in the community is getting as a board member, to be aware of what's going on. I mean, a lot of, maybe all the other board members have kids, so they do see that. So I would really like to be added to that list, so that I can see what parents are getting, especially if it is highlighted differently or focused differently, you know, I don't have access to that, and so I'd really appreciate being added to that mailing list.
I think those went out to each school community directly, that the principal newsletter is the way those go out every Friday. We'll have to think about if it makes sense to send you every school newsletter each Friday. What we were finding is, the feedback we were getting is sending a district update and a school update, and a couple of other kind of miscellaneous updates to families each week, was filling families inbox so much that they were disregarding all of it. So we streamlined everything with the feedback from a number of different parent groups to put everything, even, even my updates, the district updates, go into that, that weekly newsletter from our principals. And so, but you are right, that, that then leaves some people not receiving some of that information. So, so let's, let's talk more about that.
Yeah, let's pick a school, but, um...
Yeah.
Other thoughts on this?
Yeah, I had a thought about it. You know, parents, you know, kind of like Frank, who had kids in the district, do we, do we have those lists? Do we keep that? I would think that'd be a fairly long list.
We do, we have historical, yes, we have emails from past students. We would have to go back and pull them from the database, but they're available.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion. We can certainly push out a communication to those addresses.
Um, I'm wondering if, if just reaching out to some of our partnering organizations such as, we, we know that, for instance, our students move on to Nutria. If Nutria would be willing to put a blurb out to parents, and to say, you know, to all parents who had kids in District thirty-nine, you know, who still live there, you know, that kind of thing, this is what's going on, you know, pay attention, we want your feedback. That's, that's a huge group, like Frank, it would have caught Frank. The other organization I was thinking of is the library. If the library would be willing to put something in their newsletter, because there are a lot of people that, you know, might have grandchildren in the district that get, that regularly read the newsletter from the library, possibly even the legal women voters, or the police department even, you know, they put out a, they put out a news, a little news thing every week, just to kind of tell you what's going on in the district. So just things like that, where we can just, you know, reach out to our partners and just say, can, would you be willing to do this? This is a big, it's an important thing, it's a, it's a kind of, it's our strategic plan, it, it affects our community culture, and so I think they would probably be willing to do that.
Good. You said, I thought I saw your hand up, did you have?
Yeah, I, I do think, right, we put it in the village emails, we put it in the park district emails, like, at, at one point, there's a standard of reasonableness, right? It, it, it's up to people to read these newsletters and decide if they want to engage. And so from my perspective, you know, we do another pass at all our partner newsletters, and, and we can feel like we've done a good faith effort. You can lead a horse to water, but the truth is, if you don't have kids in D thirty-nine, the likelihood of you wanting to spend another hour on Zoom to participate in our strategic planning is probably small. So I just want to make sure we prioritize.
I was just going to say, in terms of our board representation, Lisa and I are participating, but I would encourage any other board members who are not on the team to read those resources that Katie just pointed out, and to share with us your thoughts about the data that gets posted, and the articles, or anything, so that we can bring your interests, ideas, thoughts to the meetings, and also to, you know, it's on our share, we knew what's happening, so that it's real representation of our board as a whole.
And that was one other question I had, actually, thank you, Amy. I was going to actually ask, does the, have you involved former board members?
I think that that was one of the groups that the CRC identified as, as someone to reach out to. I don't think we have a, a former board member on our core team at this point, but reaching out to them to ask them to respond to the survey would be great.
You might have a future former board member volunteering over there, is what I'm thinking. And I, and we, I can't remember, did we, we've done something with preschools in the area? Yeah, okay, because that, that seems like the group, to Lisa's point, like, those are the people who are going to be most interested in what's going on in the schools five years from now.
We were part of the recruitment group, and so we do have a volunteer from that group sitting, having a seat on our team, as well as communication about surveys and everything are sent directly to them.
So you identified a challenge you have with the community outreach? We've, the board has given you some brainstorming thinking on that. Is there any other support that we can give you, or is there anything else that you need from us as you think about the strategic planning going forward?
No, I think these suggestions are great, and I will definitely follow through on them, if you can just continue to spread the word, as you do, as you know, in your neighborhood of different families and communities at large, or even within, if they haven't engaged in any of the surveys, because there's going to be multiple opportunities, and so these are the groups that we'll be consistently reaching out to throughout the process. So if you just continue to do what you're doing, that's helpful.
Okay. Any other?
Yes, this is a super important project, obviously, for the district and for the school board. So I think we need to think about how to make this an interactive process for the school board. This is, this isn't, you know, we have two representatives, they know our minds, and they represent us, and then in June, we find out what comes out. Obviously, it has to have a, a cycle of feedback and input and discussion from the board, direction, the ideas of what the board's interested in, balance with obviously all the other stakeholders. So I think we need to think about how we want the board to have an interactive process here, to update inputs to the board representatives, board representatives updating us, as we understand in the first couple of meetings what some of the rest of these meetings are going to look like. I think that's an important item that the board needs to consider. As a model, I think, I'm thinking more along the lines of how we do contract negotiations, that we have two representatives, but we have the board, you know, with guidance and being, you know, here's things that we think you should represent us on, and then the representatives come back and say, here's what's happening that may change those things. So I'm thinking more of that type of interaction than, you know, we have two representatives, as good as they are, you know, and then come back in June, because in the long run, it's a contract between the school board and the superintendent. And I think there's a requirement that we vote on it. So the, the, um, we need to be interactive in those steps, so it doesn't end up being, you know, a surprise, or, or, you know, different direction than the board feels comfortable with when we have a vote. We really don't want to end up, you know, having a four to three, or even a negative vote on something this important.
So a couple of thoughts there, Frank. So first of all, the process was selected by the board, and the process is driven really by the process of C E C, the Consortium for Education Change, and that really is a stakeholder-driven process. And so throughout the process, the board will get updates and have the opportunity to provide feedback. It sounds like what you're, you're looking for is a little more involvement, even so, and so the board will just need to talk about that. As it is right now, I think it's envisioned to be, there's a couple of touch points throughout the process between now and the end of June, when the team's work goes out not only to the board, but to the community, to provide feedback on that, so that, you're right, by the time we get to the end and we're asking the board to approve it, it isn't something new, and it's the first time you're hearing about it. So right now, those updates would be coming to the board through committee of the whole meetings, and if we want to schedule additional meetings for board discussion and updates, we can certainly do that. But otherwise, the vision and the process really is guided by C E C, as, as the board has selected, and the board would have the opportunity to receive those updates and give feedback at committee of the whole meeting. But it really is at the board's direction, we can, we can add additional meetings if that is what the board wishes.
I think that's what I was trying to speak to in my comments, is, and I think we'll learn more at this first meeting this week, but I would hope that you all are seeing what's posted here. It's my understanding that the iterations will be there. So some of it is on the member, board members who are not representatives to be following that, and then sharing your input, because I know, I've heard them speak, the ideas that are getting distilled will be shared well prior to us, you know, just having to make a vote. So I will definitely be thinking about how we can share as it's going. I don't know how our board meetings line up with the strategic plan, but I hope that you all be seeing what's being posted and sort of proposed in early versions before those meetings or in between.
I'm sure we'll figure it out, I just wanted to make sure that it's highlighted, that this is an interactive process, and everybody has to be involved in all directions. Okay, other thoughts on the strategic planning process? All right, thank you very much, Katie, and thanks, everyone. And next up is the metrics, I believe, and that's probably Dr. Kremis Golling.
Yes, I can give an, an update to the group. The metrics team meets every other week, and is scheduled to meet again this Friday, so did not meet last week, but did meet the week prior to that. The dashboard continues to be updated, and the full reports still are published each week, so that we can continue to follow along there. At the most recent meeting, the, the team really spent a lot of time reviewing the experience that has been had over the last several weeks, and really emphasized to the community and to the administrative team to continue to reiterate the importance of following those healthy habits that we know and have been practicing for over a year now. One of the challenges we're identifying is the fact that people are now starting to recognize that the community is opening up a little bit more. And so for some, that feels like we can stop some of those mitigation efforts, or start to ease off of them, not only in the community, but within our schools as well, and that simply is not true. We must continue to really pay close attention to all of those healthy habits, staying home when you're ill, or when a household member is ill or being evaluated. Quarantining as directed is really critically important, paying attention to those potential exposure events, whether they're through travel, through sports, through social activities, really knowing who you're in close contact with, and then acting in response to that potential exposure by isolating or quarantining and really monitoring your symptoms. All of those are really, really important and remain critical to our ongoing success in, in-person learning. So we have, we've taken that advice and continued to emphasize that with our families. We'll continue to do that throughout this week. I will share my screen here for a second, just so we can have a quick look at the metrics that are posted right now. See if I can do this successfully. There we go. So as we look here, we did, we are seeing a little bit of an increase there, not only in those black lines, which is the regional positivity rates, but also in our more localized positivity rates. Because the region is so much larger, those trends are a little more consistently seen, whereas those red and blue and yellow lines tend to peak and valley a little bit more just because the N is so much smaller in those catch basins. But what you see at the tail end there is what appears to be a little more of a plateau, possibly a decline, and we're really hopeful that that is the case. As more and more people have access to the vaccine, we recognize that as the community started to open up in activities, in travel, in all sorts of opportunities, we saw that positivity rate start to increase. And so now we are very hopeful that we'll see it plateau and begin to decline again, again, as vaccines come into play, and as people learn new ways of accessing those opportunities that are available within our community, but doing so safely. Those social gatherings, those large group events are still risky adventures, and so we need to really be aware of what our exposure is in those times, and recognize not only our own exposure, but that of the people we're meeting with. If a group of ten people get together and one in those next couple of days is identified with COVID, all ten are potentially exposed, all ten need to quarantine for that entire time period following. That is really what we've learned, helps to limit spread, and we need to continue to carefully adhere to those practices. And again, the new case rate per one hundred thousand, again, we saw that uptick here in Willmet, in Nutria Township area, and within our staff region. So we need to continue to keep a really close eye on that. The case identification count as well, especially post-spring break, is something noteworthy that we're continuing to monitor. Many of those cases are connected in one way or another to travel or to some outside exposure, known and occasionally unknown, but more often, there is some exposure or activity that can be pointed to. So again, we need to really be cautious as we're starting to open up our community and starting to access those opportunities, to really continue to be aware of those mitigation efforts. And then finally, the active cases identified within District thirty-nine. At this point, we do have eight cases identified. Six of those cases have resulted in classroom quarantines, so I'll talk a little bit about that, as we have increased in-person attendance, and we have five days per week attendance. When a case is identified, if it hasn't previously been isolated, that often does result in a classroom quarantine. And for the five-eight level, because distancing within classrooms has been reduced to less than six feet, that is, a quarantine is directed by the county Department of Public Health for fourteen days. So that really is impactful for those who are placed on quarantine. Remote instruction, fully synchronous, is provided during those times when a classroom is on quarantine. However, it still is impactful for those who wish to be in person and aren't able to. Let me see if I can stop sharing my screen here. This is always the hardest part of sharing in the first place. Hmm. I found it. Okay, so we're back here. So a couple of other things I just want to identify and really highlight for the group, in addition to continuing to remind everyone of staying home and practicing those mitigation efforts, we are really closely examining the experience data from April, looking not only at safeguard, but also at the other ways in which cases are being identified. The testing subcommittee of the metrics team will meet this week. Safeguard collection and processing is occurring again today, and then the board will consider and direct the program's extension at the board meeting a week from today, whether or not we... or not we, you as a board, want to see that program extended. I did talk a little bit about classroom quarantines. Again, those, there were six, there are six right now that are on classroom quarantine. I will share just a little bit about the case identification so that the board is aware. I know you received some information about this but want to make sure that you're up to date on, on what has occurred both with safeguard and with other cases identified outside of screening. So in summary, through April 14th, we had six potentially significant findings in the two weeks of sampling that were returning from spring break. All of those were confirmed via PCR testing. Two of those cases were probable cases and concurrently diagnosed. The other four were newly identified through screening. There was, again, some travel connected with those. Many of our families though have done exactly what they should have done for PCR testing upon return from travel, but we know this virus is a tricky thing and sometimes the virus doesn't show itself until five or seven days after returning from an exposure event. And so again, these are really things that we have to pay close attention to. The six students that were identified, two were at the elementary level, four at the 5-8 level. Four actually were symptomatic and the other two who were asymptomatic had some known exposure, so otherwise knew that they were needing to quarantine or possibly had been exposed. And so that's really interesting and noteworthy. There were four who reported to us that there was some travel exposure. Again, two of those had some known exposure that occurred during travel and then two who reported some potential outside activities that may have connected them to some exposure. Again, it's really, really difficult to point to an exposure event unless you've actually been notified of an individual in your close contact who has COVID-19, but looking back over, have you traveled or are you willing to share with us what those experiences have been, lead us to better understand what those identifications are. John, I see you have a hand up. Do you want me to talk through the non-safeguard identified cases?
No, no, I'm curious about, so, so kids were in school and they knew they'd been exposed and they were symptomatic?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, people are doing a really, really good job of continuing to follow those.
Yeah.
What should be the case. What happens sometimes is when, when a case does get identified, we look back and you and parents think about what those symptoms were.
Yeah.
And so sometimes they're able to say, you know, you had a stomach ache two days ago, but I didn't, I didn't connect that.
Yeah.
With a COVID-like symptom. And so we, we just weren't thinking about it in that same way. And sometimes it is the same day as safeguard, symptoms start to develop.
Yeah.
And so they're symptomatic but hadn't yet fully developed that. And so again, we're, we only are privy to the information that's provided to us in those instances.
Yeah.
We're really thankful that people are as honest and forthright with information because it does help us to better understand what those experiences are and helps us to know where we can continue to really emphasize. Staying home when a family member is, is ill or experiencing symptoms is really critically important. We knew the travel guidelines, we have to follow what the CDC's, I mean, what the county Department of Public Health says, but even they will acknowledge that they're trying to emphasize testing and in so doing, recognize that some exposure would have been missed because if you test before you return, that really doesn't give the virus enough time to develop sufficiently to know if you have. So there's certainly some, some gaps there. And again, we're so appreciative of families participating in not only this program but accessing testing through PCR or otherwise. When they have a symptom, when they have any kind of known exposure, it's really critical, not only quarantine but also test to determine whether or not you are carrying the virus.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ellen, I see your hand up too. Do you want me to go through the other cases or you want to ask a question here?
Well, I wanted to say something. I don't know whether you want me to say it now or wait until you go through the cases.
Let me just quick summarize what we found otherwise. In that same time period, there were cases identified outside of screening. There were 13 total cases of COVID-19 that were identified in that same period of time. One staff member and 11 students. Of those 11 students, there were eight elementary students and four at the 5-8 level. Seven were symptomatic and six were asymptomatic as reported to us. There were some known household diagnoses that occurred there, some connected with travel, so seven of those 11 were connected with travel and then some potential outside activity. And there were four unknown who simply couldn't point to anything that may have increased their exposure. Six of those individuals participated in screening when last available at school and there were no findings of potential significance in that. Again, some of those would have occurred right before spring break and these cases were identified right after. Two of those individuals participated in screening within one day of that diagnosis, that PCR test, and again, no significant findings there. And then five of those individuals did not participate in safeguard screening. So again, we'll be looking at reviewing not only these data but those that have been captured since then. We had a few more cases identified at the end of the week. I believe today we're processing our safeguard screening and so we'll see if there are any cases identified through that again and then we'll proceed from there. We will also continue to examine options. One of the options that we really carefully considered is a Sunday processing of safeguard screening. I know that that sounds like it would be really valuable and beneficial. There are a couple of challenges we have there. One is that safeguard has indicated that they are not able to process all of our samples on Sunday in time for Monday return of results. So we would have to kind of pick and choose who is able to be processed on Sunday. We also recognize that some families continue to participate because we've made it relatively easy for them to do the sample drop-off on Monday when they send it just to school with their families. And so we have to kind of weigh the pros and cons there. Obviously, staffing on a Sunday would be an additional burden to kind of navigate. But the other thing that people sometimes forget is a Sunday processing then requires a look back to Friday. So we're always looking back 48 hours from that sample collection. And so it doesn't really free us from all potential exposure because if you're collecting on a Sunday, you have to look back to the Friday for contact tracing. So if we continue with five days per week of in-person, no matter which day we're sampling on, there's some potential exposure that, that needs to be examined there for close contact. So we'll continue to evaluate that. We continue to have discussions as a team about the timing and how best to implement the program and strengthen the program. But again, preventing cases really is all of our responsibility and so emphasizing those healthy habits, staying home when there's potential exposure, when you've been asked to quarantine, really monitoring your symptoms is critically important. I know we're all fatigued with that, but it really, really is important that if you're experiencing one of those symptoms that may be reflective of COVID, stay home, get tested, keep the whole house home until those evaluation results come back. So we'll continue to emphasize that as well. All told though, that is about 4% of our classrooms that are on quarantine. And so we recognize that is a really significant impact. The rest of our students are in-person daily at this point, if that's the model they've chosen to enroll in, and we're having really good success with that model. So there's, there is kind of a yin and a yang here that we're really navigating. Sorry, Ellen, you have some questions or some feedback?
Feedback. First of all, I would like to say, number one, I love that you emphasize that that's 4% and that, that leaves 96% of our students that are in-school learning, and that's huge. So thank you for that. And also, thank you for your upbeat way of giving a message to our families that are doing what they're supposed to be doing the right way and reminding families that even though we're kind of in the, feeling like we're in the home stretch, there's, there's still more to be done. However, I'm going to take this moment, not only as a board member but as a parent, to be a little bit harsher, actually, in my message because it's come to my personal attention that there are community members that are not continuing to be vigilant and are not continuing to be responsible. And in that situation, there is no amount of testing or any kind of mitigation or things that we can do as a board, administration, as a school district, or anything to keep COVID out of our schools and our kids in classrooms. And I am on social media and I read the threads and there's a lot of blame and a lot of people saying things that are quite nasty and cruel without all the information. And I'm tired of it, actually. And so I wanted to speak up about it publicly. And I just wanted to say that missing from those threads is parents who have knowingly ignored school safety protocols, parents who have been sending their children to school despite knowing that they allowed their kids to roam maskless, to be in contact with other children, in close contact, and exposed, to go to events and ride in cars and participate in things in a risky manner. And I understand that we're all tired. I'm tired. And I have kids. And we all make mistakes. I'm not saying that we don't. So I'm not just blaming, I'm saying, I, I get it. But the fact of the matter is that, like I said, there's no amount of testing in the world that will keep COVID out of our schools if people become too self-centered to do the right thing. And the reality is, is that people need to be honest with themselves and with their fellow community members and look past what's most convenient and realize that the protocols that are in place are there for a reason. And you might not like them and you may not think that they're all necessary, but it's the way that we have kept our, we've kept COVID out of our schools this whole year. It's the way that the administration and staff have kept all of the children and families in our districts safe all year long. And for that, I'm thankful and appreciative. And so I know for a fact that there have been families whose kids were exposed in the past two weeks in activities outside of school, and I know there were families that didn't report. And I'm sure there have been all along. And I know there are families that have done rapid tests and thought that that was okay if they did a rapid test and said, and they decided on their own that they were going to send their kids to school on a rapid test. And the reality is, that's not good enough. I also know people who have rapid tested and PCR tested and 10 days later have tested positive for COVID. That's the reason that there are 10-day quarantines. That's the reason there are 14-day quarantines now for people that are in contact closer than six feet. And we now have our kids in school because that's what everyone wanted, including me. We want our kids to be in school, but our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are closer than six feet now. And so we have to be even more careful and more honest and more vigilant and as responsible as ever and make the hard decisions. So when your child is knowingly exposed, you need to call the school and report it and quarantine your child, even if they are asymptomatic and they test twice and they're negative and it's hard and your child complains and they see other kids at school and they don't have any symptoms or whatever, and it sucks. I know it sucks. I've lived through it. I'm living through it right now, I will tell you. But it's the right thing to do because if my child went to school and ended up testing positive after seven or eight days and infected anyone in their class or resulted in having their class quarantined after nine days, I don't know how I could forgive myself. So that's my message to the community is, I'm not being judgmental, I'm just telling you, I know it's hard, but please, please, if you want to keep our kids in school, please do the right thing. Please look at yourselves and look at your neighbors and look at your kids and your families and everyone and know that the new strains, the new variants, they are more contagious than ever. It's still, COVID is still here. It hasn't gone away. So, and we've put our children closer now and there are more of them now in the classroom. And so now is the time to be more vigilant, not less. So that's my message. And I just thank you, Carrie, for everything that you and the administration, the teachers, everything, everything that you have put in place to keep our children safe. And the 96% of our kids that are in schools is so heartening. And the people that are doing the right thing, thank you so much. And people that have made decisions that, without thinking possibly or have misstepped, please think in the future about making possibly better decisions. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, I think that's it for strategy then, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was in favor.
All right. It is now time for public comment. Public comment will be accepted in-person and remotely via Zoom. Are there any, there doesn't look like there's any community members. So Mr. Dimonte, do we have any community members registered that wish to address the board?
We have one community member in there. And if they wish to provide a public comment, could you raise your hand in Zoom?
And let's just remind people to say their name and community of residence on my board directive. They have three minutes and we would like you to turn on your camera and leave it on during the duration of your comments.
So that person was connected in here twice, which is part of the reason why I need her to raise her hand. But she's, oh, here we go. All right. Laurie, I'll move you over into the meeting.
Can you turn your camera on, Laurie, please?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Thanks, perfect.
Hi. So I just have one question today. I want to know if for District 39, it's a priority to identify asymptomatic COVID cases before they enter the building of any of our schools?
So Laurie, how we work public comment is that people have three minutes to make their comments, but we don't respond. So it's not like a Q and A, but you can certainly make a question and we can get back to you after the meeting.
Okay. So, so my question is just so simple, which is that I want to know if it's a priority for our district to identify asymptomatic cases before they enter the buildings. And the reason I'm asking such a simple and specific question is that I think all of my work in this area and advocating has boiled down to this one possible difference in opinion that I have from possibly the administration, or maybe we don't, maybe, and that's what I'm trying to get to, which is that there really in my mind is only one way that cases are asymptomatically identified at this time, which is through screening. And so I'm just which is that there really, in my mind, is only one way that cases are asymptomatic identified at this time, which is through screening. And so I'm just curious if that's a priority for us. And I wanted an answer to that question. If it is a priority, then I'm curious if you know of any other way to identify asymptomatic cases before they walk in the door besides one of the screening programs. So that's, that's my question. And it's, it's not, you know, longer than that. It's just that I think that this question has arteries that come off of it, which lead to the potential of more quarantines for in-person learning, risks that the people who signed up for hybrid, like we did, were not willing to take, which is to say that a lot of people are walking in the door without mandatory screening and now possibly no screening at all with asymptomatic cases that they're innocently not even aware of. So I understand what Ellen said and I think that she made a fantastic point, which is our own responsibility to our community. But also what about people who, because of the nature of this virus, simply don't know that they have it? And they expose all the other kids in a classroom to this illness or just to no in-person school for two solid weeks? I just, I don't understand. And so because of that, I very sadly pivoted my child to remote last week. We aren't a family that has underlying illnesses.
I'm sorry, Laurie.
And can I just end with one sentence to finish my thought? Which is that I really didn't want to have to do it. But the risk to me seemed like something that we couldn't take on. And I still don't want to be in remote. I just, I, I just want you to consider the question of asymptomatic question, the asymptomatic issue.
Thank you very much.
Sorry I went over.
Mr. DiMonte, are there others who wish to speak?
There are none.
Great, then we will move on to old business. Do you have anything for equity work on the board?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I, I do have a question. We, we had a survey that was sent out by Dr. Logan. And so if people saw that or didn't see that, let us know. We should try and make sure that we get as many of those back as we can.
I will acknowledge it's a, it's a lengthier, it's not a check-the-box survey in terms of his questions. I think they're qualitative and deep and really good questions, but it does take a little more than just a two-minute sit-down. So I know he'd appreciate it if we, and I say that I have not completed mine just in full disclosure, I think we've only done one. It's because I sort of got stumped. So I think if you can dedicate 10 minutes to really sit down and give a thought,
Thanks for that reminder. I could use it.
Ironically.
I will say, it brings, it, it, it makes you do the work again in a good, healthy way, I think, to really reflect on what we got out of this. So I think that's good equity work in and of itself, in addition to the value it provides Dr. Logan.
Perfect. So any other old business? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Panzika for new business. The House Bill 7.
Okay. We, we teed it up a little bit at the last meeting, but IASB put out a request, a strong request to school boards to weigh in on, in particular, Illinois House Bill 7. While it was in committee, it's now moved out of committee with an 8-0 vote and moved on to the General House. IASB is still asking for comments from school boards. In particular, they're strongly advocating a negative vote, but, but basically to, to say that this bill should not be turned into a law. So that's, that's the position of IASB. I felt it was important that we discuss, not necessarily have to reach a resolution today, but that we begin discussion because this is actually a pretty complicated topic. Because it fits the, the processes that we've been doing for the last year or two. There have been a number of ISB and IASB proposals that have come up that as a board, we decided that we would discuss, even though several of them had absolutely no immediate impact on our school district, but we felt that it was important to have a position. This particular bill could impact our school district. So it's, it's important that we discuss it in a timely manner, which I think could be another month or so. So it's not like timely has to be today, but in a timely manner that we get our input, one way or the other, into the appropriate people to be consistent with the strategies that we've been using in the past, but also to represent our community. So that, that's kind of the reason why it's on the agenda. Some material got sent out as feedback for, or as initial information for this meeting. I don't know how much time people have in terms of reading it. I can do a two or three-sentence summary if, if that would, get us onto the same page quickly. So basically, what the bill says is there's 700-plus school districts in Illinois. That's, that's a huge number, you know, like second-most in the country. There's inherent waste in it. There are some places that say there's actually some efficiencies and that the net-net may not be that much different. But ideally, you look at 700 and you say, that seems like a large number. So what the bill said was, they're going to propose setting up a commission. They've identified basically how it is, but basically it's a statewide commission, so it's not really local representation. The commission will spend up to a year and come back with a mandatory redistricting plan that requires at least 25% of the current districts to be absorbed into other districts. So the, the real plus and minus of it is, it's, it's a way of addressing the issue, but it's addressed at the state level and it becomes mandatory. The bill is obviously going to be reviewed. It's 43 pages long. Forty of those pages talk about finances, basically, because there's a lot of intricate details. There's, the original bill implied things may be combined as units. So a unit district would be, a high school and all the feeder districts would be one district, one school board, one administration staff with obviously multiple layers. There's an amendment that said, it'll only, that was proposing that only elementary schools are combined and only high schools are combined. So there's still a lot of rounding and a lot of detail. But at the next level of detail, and I have some information if we want to get to that next level today, there's a lot of differences, if it ever applied to us. The, you know, reserves, the budgets, the number of students per classroom. There's fairly wide discrepancies. I mean, we have 26, 27. Avoca has 14, 15 kids per classroom. Teacher salaries are different. So there's a number of things. And the way the bill is set up, it's one year with this commission that, that basically goes off purposely, independently. They come back with a proposal. The proposal is basically the mandate. And then depending on nuances, you know, two to four years to fully implement and have everything be combined. So, so that's, that's the base. Timing-wise, probably this late spring would be a vote, if there was a vote on it. Some bills get passed out of committee and never get voted on. There was a companion bill in the Senate that didn't get out of committee, but as near as I can tell, that means the House bill, if it passed, would then get moved on to the Senate. So that's where it stands. Time-wise, like I said, another month or so is still within the range of time to get a position on record. Either way, but to get a position on record.
And Frank, the position on record would be what? A letter to the General Assembly, a letter to the IASB?
Uh, well, I-
What is the action?
IASB had a template. I guess I didn't send that. I thought I did. They had a template of like, you know, kind of a semi-form letter, you know, where from the-
But to who?
It's right here, to your house members. You did a tangent.
Yeah, they originally said to the house members, though part of it is also to, oh, yeah, here it is. Um, yeah, house members in particular, that's who they recommended to. They probably want to copy, just from the standpoint of then they can, you know, tally their numbers, yea or nay, but they can tally their numbers and have an impact that says, 98% of the people or whatever have this view. But, but the, the focus is to the house member. Our house member is not on the committee that voted it out, but is on some educational committees, so. And obviously wants to represent our community. So whatever we say will have some impact on this one.
Thanks for doing all the work, Frank. What do people think?
I, I, I read the, I read what you sent. I really appreciate Frank sending it. And, and I think this is one of those things where there could be, I, I mean, love the goal, you know, I'm sorry. Flat-out adore it. And there, there'll be unintended consequences. And I, and I think we have a lot to learn, frankly. You know, just as a school board, we, I, I mean, I haven't really thought through what the issues would be of consolidation. You know, I just think, oh, there's savings here, you know, and efficiencies. But there would also be costs. And, and then the question in my mind would be, well, who would we, if it were us, right? Because we're awfully big district. I'm not sure it even makes sense. But what, what would consolidation look like financially? You know, does it make sense? Would any of the neighboring districts be just pushed into our district, the smaller ones? And I guess where I'm going with this is if there's gonna be a commission, you know, that's one thing. But the other thing is, you know, what would consolidation look like? Like what would, what would our desire be? You know, what if it were a process that we could take control of and hand them? Like, here's the answer. You know, you should, you know, whatever, merge us with, who knows? And this is what it would cost and this is, you know, like, I would actually like to understand it more, is where I'm going. Pardon the wandering monologue.
Others?
Yeah. I have a question. Since here, well, that neutrality in the top 20% of size of districts, does that-
How does a 700 do?
So does that mean maybe we would be immune from this?
No.
Or because of our organization with the feeders and nutriler, that we're kind of right there?
That was more of a baseline.
Okay.
The point is, the, the, one of the things of having a commission at the state with people that are handpicked by representatives, basically, is that it could be anything. I mean, one proposal would be that it's a unit district and nutriler and all the feeder districts become one. There's, like I said, the amendment could be that, that doesn't make sense, but for reasons of the commission, who knows? And I'll just throw one out, not saying anything that, but it could be, our elementary schools are combined with Evanston or Skokie's elementary school districts. And our high school is combined with one of those school districts. It doesn't have to be based on any formula, the way the bill is set up. The only thing the bill says is 25% of the current districts will be absorbed into other districts.
Others? Well, I'll go. I think consolidation is a great idea. I think that we have too many of these local governments and that districts that consist of one or two or five schools don't make any sense to me. This is saying, let's have a year-long commission. Let's reduce the number of districts by 25%. I think both of those schools are good. I feel like it's exploratory. And so my read of Frank's summary is that first you have the commission, then you have a report, and then it has to get voted on, the recommendations. I'm, I'm reading, it says-
The, what, the way I read it and was that the report gets handed to the regional superintendent-
Yeah.
Who can identify procedural issues with it. There was no-
But it can't be law. It, like, a, a commission makes a report, not a law.
Well, the, the law was that the commission proposes what will happen.
Right, but that doesn't mean that's what will happen. They're, they're coming up with recommendations. No commission makes law.
Right, but the, the law wasn't to set up a commission. The law was consolidate.
Mm-hmm.
And the con-
And the commission's-
The commission identifies how they're going to consolidate. So there is an output and the output is consolidation. That's part of the law or would be part of the law if it's, the bill becomes a law. At this stage. So it, it's not, it's, the bill isn't set up a commission. The bill is reduce the number of, of districts by 25%. And the process of doing that is have a commission identify how that's going to happen.
Yep. And so I, I would be in favor of sending a letter in support of the bill and recommending somebody from this board fit on the commission. That's just one person's idea.
Did you, you had your hand up for a second?
Well, the, what you two are talking about is critical in my mind. What, what, what is the answer to what you're asking? Does the commission, what happens after the commission makes its recommendations? I agree with you, Lisa, in idea. I don't know what happens after they come up with their recommendations.
There, there are obviously lots of steps and things can be amended, whatever, but the way it's set up right now is-
So here's the law. It says, on or before May 20, May 1st, 2022, the commission must vote on its recommended proposition and file a report with the governor and the General Assembly. It says that if the commission adopts the report by an affirmative vote of at least 11 members, then the commission's proposition for reorganization of school districts into unit districts shall be filed with the appropriate regional superintendent of schools.
That clears it up, Amy.
Projections immediately. That's the, I mean, that's the wording of-
Yeah, the, the regional superintendent has weeks, I mean, identifies weeks, not months or- to identify any procedural issues. And then it becomes a mandate.
So I have to admit that that question is less critical to me. As important as I think it is, and the reason is because I'm taking sort of a, a Rawlsian veil of ignorance view of the ethics of this, which is that if we say, this is an appropriate thing to be done. We think school districts should be consolidated as a general principle, then I'm not sure I feel great about saying unless it's us. So, you know-
What do you, I don't understand.
It, it's, if we say, hey, we are in support of consolidating districts, unless you come and say that we have to consolidate and then we're not supporting it anymore. That I don't think is an appropriate stance.
I don't think anybody's saying that.
No, but that is, I, I agree. But then it becomes a question of how the commission works, right? So if we say, yeah, there should be a, there should be a way of consolidating districts and the commission is going to make, you know, there's some commission and it makes a report, then I think we're going to have to live with that commission's report, whether or not it then goes back to the legislature and they have to vote on it again or if it automatically happens as soon as the commission issues the report or it happens if there are no procedural issues, blah, blah, blah. Whatever the mechanism is it's coming up with, I think that's what we have to live with. That said, I agree with you. I'm in support. I, I think we- That said, I agree with you. I'm in support. I, I think we have too many districts. I think, uh, they should be consolidated, and I am happy to send a letter in support of doing that, so.
Erin, then Ellen.
You know, I'm simultaneously holding two ideas, which is I agree with you, but I'm nervous as the sender who has higher class sizes and, um, some of those issues, how this would impact us financially. That's a big deal. I mean, how would we, I mean, would the pool, um, would we be district? I'm just trying to, like, I, I don't, I don't know. But it makes, it makes me nervous as a representative of the community when we're on that end of things, how this would impact our taxpayers.
Ellen?
Um, I'm actually, I'm in agreement with, with you, Lisa and Mark. Um, I think we, there are way too many districts and just too many schools and individuals. Um, and I also, though, the, the key to, to this for me is the representation piece of this. And what makes me most nervous is having lived through and been in, on kind of a microscopic level, um, what happened in CPS when Ron Rom took over and decided to consolidate all the schools in CPS. And just randomly, seemingly randomly, um, closed schools and combined schools and districts within, you know, greater Chicago, within Chicago. And it was a, in my opinion, having lived through it, it was a disaster. Like, it was really rough on a lot of families and a lot of districts. They were busing kids to school districts that, like, families had no control over, and the, and they closed schools. And, I mean, so, in some situations, it was like backing two dump trucks into each other, and, and it, there was like no rhyme or reason to it, and no one had any say in it. And families had no say in it, and it seemed like districts had no say in it. It was really, like, the, and maybe it was the way it was handled, um, maybe it was that enough thought didn't go into it. I don't know. It was like, it was, but it seems like that was an example of what they're talking about here on a small, on a much smaller level, because you're talking about the state of Illinois doing this on a grand level. But that's, that's what makes me nervous about it. And so I feel like what was missing there was representation. Like, people had no representation. The individual, you know, areas, um, within Chicago didn't have a voice.
So just a couple of things on that. That's very different than what we're talking about here. That was CPS closing schools due to lack of enrollment and poor performance.
I, I understand. I, I know, I know that was di- I know that. I know it was different. But I'm saying, I'm saying, we're also looking at this as like, we're saying, okay, there's too many schools. And who decides that-
Well, it's not, it's too many schools, districts. That's different than schools.
Which school, okay, which school district. But who decides which school different, district is less significant than another one? And the families living in, let's say, Kennelworth or whatever, who value that they're intimate district and don't want to be tied into a larger district, you know, they might want that, a voice for their district. So I'm just saying, who is it that gives them a voice, and how do, how do they find the representation? So I, I'm agreeing with you in that the only way that I see this working is that there, is that this, is that the, the, the regions really, really have a voice in the decisions that are made. And I do agree that there's too many, and, and it's too broken apart, but there has to be representation and voice.
Well, I think that those are the two opposing options. Either you handle it locally with representation, which is sort of how things stand, or the proposal here, which is, we're going to look at this from a global perspective and figure out how to manage. Yeah, I, I- I don't think there's a way, I don't think the proposal on the table is to merge the two. I, I mean-
Yeah.
And that's the dilemma. That's why this is such a hard, because I think the way it stands now is to handle it the way you're talking about, and that's how we have so many districts.
Right, districts will not consolidate, right, on their own.
Nobody wants that individually.
So, so, so John, and then I've brought this up as a topic. I haven't given my personal view yet, but John, did you have anything?
Oh, no, I, I did all my early commenting. I mean, I, I'm, I'm torn. Um, it's, I, I think what Lisa threw out as an idea is, is a good one. Um, and, and frankly, it's, it's not, it's not as if we, we have to do one thing. We could do multiple things. Like, we could do our own analysis of what a merger would look like and learn from it, um, since we have such a brilliant business manager here, given more to do. Um, and, um, totally not bypassing you, Carrie. I would go to you first. Um, but it, it's not as if you, you, you could pick one, is my point. We could, we could go down the road of what Lisa's suggesting and try to understand what the consequences would be. Because it's, we would be doing a huge disservice, I think, to, to our voters by not talking about this all the time, you know, and helping them understand what's going on. You know, ignoring it would be a, a real problem.
I guess I do, what, what I'm trying to say is I do, I think that in, if we had a representative, if Lisa, yes, we agree with this, if we have a representative, what I was getting at was, if we have a representative, then I would say it's our responsibility to then be accountable to the other districts around us to listen and to take them into account. Like, to listen and talk and be open and to take them into account in the decision-making process. Like, I, I guess that was kind of what I was getting at. Does that make sense?
Maybe. Mark, you're very good at-
Well, Frank had the comment.
Yeah, so the point of this bill is to take the power away. That, that is the point, because when it said, we think it's a, a bad idea to have this many districts talk about it, we've had slight philosophical discussions with Avoca, which there's a natural merger. Um, and it's been totally rejected by, by them. So the whole point of this is to take control away. It's not, and then we'll have somebody on the board, or when the, the, the thing comes out and it's terrible for our, our district, that we get to say, never mind. The whole point of this bill is to say, the only way it's going to happen is if you have absolutely no input, and when the output comes out, it will be mandated, and that's what you have to do. And my concern is, as representatives of our community, if we asked our community, I do not believe our community would say that they want to give up that power, that our community would want to be forced to merge with any random set of school districts, which is what could happen. Um, so is it important to reduce the number of school districts? Yes, but is it appropriate for our district to give up control to a state commission and then have that mandated on our voters? I do not believe our voters would say that, and before we would have that as a position of this board, I think we'd have to have more voter input on that. Because it's way more than just the school people. It, it has implications on tax base. Um, and one of the proposals could easily be that, that even if it's the, the elementary schools as the feeder districts, that, you know, half of Ramona kids end up going to Avoca schools. Um, and, you know, potentially some of our Harper kids end up going to Kennelworth schools. Um, that may or may not be a good idea, but if you try to take our twenty-five kids and look at the fifteen at Avoca per classroom, or the seventeen at Kennelworth, you would say, put some of our kids into those schools, and that's, so, I mean, there's all of those implications. So philosophically, do we have too many school districts? But when you get to that next level of detail, I don't think we'd be representing our constituents by saying we give up any ability to decide how this is going to be done.
So I think, Frank, that who our constituents are is the taxpayers as well. And this is, the issue is, right, that we are collectively bearing the burden of too much overhead as a result of too many local government entities. And so a couple of other things. First is, whatever they're doing, they're going to have public hearings, right? It's a year-long commission, and there is no such thing as coming up with a consolidation plan with no input. Um, the second piece is that, Ellen, to your point, we can suggest that we are willing to serve, but we can't say, we're only going to approve this if we get a seat at the table. You know, I, I don't know that that would, uh, work. Um, and the next piece is, sometimes you have to make change for the common good. Our state is broke. Our educational system is broke. And sometimes we all have to take risks for the betterment, for the common good betterment. And I hear your point, Frank, and the truth is, we don't know what would come out of this commission. And maybe it'll be good, and maybe it'll be some pain. But, you know, for me personally, our state's broke, and we need to do something different.
So our, our taxpayers in District Thirty-nine, we already have an efficient district. We already have one of the larger districts. We already have, you know, less cost per pupil than, than most of the other districts in, um, nutriler. If we get blended in with Evanston, I have absolutely no idea what that would mean. But for our, for our taxpayers, this is not a plus. It's good for Illinois, maybe, and probably, though ISBE actually did their own analysis for whatever inputs they had and said that this kind of consolidation actually net-net not being cost-effective. Um, I don't know if I agree or disagree with that, but, but that's a data point. But for our taxpayers, we're an efficient school district. We have a reasonable size to be efficient, and any differences from that will probably impact the amount of money that our taxpayers, um, will, will pay. So as an Illinois scheme, um, this probably is the only way this is going to happen, but for our taxpayers, um, I would think that this is a negative, and I think we'd have to have really strong community input before we go on record. If we go on record saying this is a cool idea, and a commission gets set up, this will be one of the first districts that the commission says, cool, they think it's a good idea, let's do it there. So it's not a non-event if we say this. It will increase the probability that our district is one of the districts that gets merged. Um, so we, we, it's not like a, you know, it, it's, it's not an event that says that if we make that decision, that it has no ramifications on our taxpayers.
Yeah, but Frank, I just want to say, there's going to be a formula. It's not going to be like all those who wrote a letter in favor get hit first, right? It will be, there will be strict criteria. I, I just wanted to be-
I have a process question.
Yeah, I was going to go there.
Sorry, I may interrupt you, but-
Nope, nope, no, I needed to go there. So go ahead, Mark.
You can go ahead with the process if you want.
No, you know what, you can take a turn at it. Let's see what you come up with.
I, I think there are three options. We can send a letter in support. We can send a letter opposing, and we can not send a letter. And my process question is, today at this meeting right now, are we trying to get to one of those three? Or are we going, are we trying to just have a discussion and we will determine which of those three we're going with later?
My, my concept that this is a complicated enough issue that it needs to be teed up. Um, I think that the timing says that we don't have to make a decision today, and I don't think we have enough thought into this yet to make a decision today. And on top of that, we do have a new board, um, in weeks. And for something this significant, I think it really should be done by the new board. Um, so my thought for today was to tee it up with some facts, the beginning discussion. There's obviously lots of pros and cons, um, and then to discuss it again, probably at the next committee, the whole.
Eric, so let me, I, I'll just look around and I see some nodding of heads. So we're not trying to get to a decision today, it sounds like?
When is the latter date, Frank?
The, the first window is before it got out of committee, because that's the most leverage, and that window's passed. The next is when bills become laws, which would be June or sometime after that, if it ever really got voted on. But the next window is before June, is really what it sounds like.
Okay, so I, I just want to understand, your thing, when is this going to vote? Go ahead, Amy.
It says, um, will be taken up on the House floor for a vote. The bill must be defeated prior to the House third reading deadline, April twenty-third.
This sounds like it's timely.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know, this is IASB who's wanting us to act, so it could be their own.
I just want to say, we haven't heard from Dr. Crumis Goliath, uh, her thoughts.
Thank you. I have, uh, been around the school consolidation discussion for many, many years. And I think that the points that you all raised are, are the points that will continue to be raised. See, there are local decisions, in which case it's a really hard decision for communities to make, because there are so many offsets for the benefits that potentially could be realized. There are also really significant detriment, and so if it's a localized decision, it's a really difficult decision to be made. It is not never made, though. It just is more difficult to be made. I come from two districts, both of which, both of which have consolidated with neighboring districts for, uh, myriad reasons, but they found it to be beneficial, and they pursued that, and, and they did, in fact, consolidate with, uh, I was in the larger district, they consolidated with the smaller district. It is not an easy decision to make, and it does, uh, tear apart communities in the process. Not, not never to be rebuilt again, but there's some impact of that. If instead we're going to take a state commission and they're going to direct it, if you want my honest opinion, I think politically, um, that would be really difficult to actually come to fruition, because there are so, there's so much local control over school districts in Illinois, and, um, that's afforded to us in many different ways. And so, um, so I don't have a stance on, on the benefits and drawbacks. I know that the only way to make it work well is if the community is behind the idea. To have it forced upon a school district, um, raises to, to more detriment than benefit. In, in my humble opinion, having, um, experienced it just a little bit, um, but not having researched it nearly as much as I'm sure the experts who sit on a commission to really tackle this would be able to research it. So definitely benefits and drawbacks, and I don't think there's an easy answer here, so.
And so, it sounds imminent, though, is what I'm hearing, like-
Well, I don't know. That's IASB who wants us to actively, so I don't know if that April twenty-third date is accurate or essential. I don't feel ready personally to make a decision today on how we intervene, but that's what they say. There's some April twenty-third deadline.
Every step becomes harder to influence. You know, getting it out of committee was the most leverage. They made a big deal about that. The third reading makes it a, a official thing that gets discussed. They make a big deal about that. But things like this don't get voted on until June. Um, so, you know, it's a, your leverage changes a little bit, but it's not the, the last window.
Well, I, I don't hear any readiness on the board today to come to a decision. And so my suggestion would be that, look, if, if it's an April twenty-third deadline, we're not going to make that anyway, so we kind of can say, well, we missed our chance. Um, but I would suggest, then, that we maybe take a couple more minutes to discuss where we want to get to, and then, uh, maybe we set up somebody to say, okay, let's, let's make sure that we know what the timeline is, and then make a timely decision, assuming that we, we still can, um, and discuss that at future board meetings.
So Mark, thanks for the, I, I think that's right, but I do want to say, in the couple of minutes that remain, we actually do it on process instead of the subject. Because I would want to know, in addition to the time, like, when do we need to weigh in? What information would you all want that would make you feel like you were informed to put a stake in the ground or not? And then, Frank, would you be willing to get that information?
Yes.
Right, what questions do you want Frank to look into to, to help?
Maybe in states that do this well, and, or have had success, or, you know, if, if we're so low in terms of the high number of districts that we have, where are states that manage their districts differently and well? I, I can look up. I, I can look up into that myself, but that's something I'm curious about.
John?
I was just going to add on to that, that the, the other critical part of that question is, do they do it well because the state education system was created that way from the first place? Or does it work? Or do they actually pursue consolidation of smaller districts into-
Yeah.
-what now are effective and efficient larger districts? Which, um, there are states that just started with larger districts from the get-go. So that's a different, different model.
Absolutely.
John?
I'm interested in the politics and who supports the bill and, and where this is going. That's what I want to know.
I'm tied beyond the questions in authenticity, Frank.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I heard a clear question around what the process would be for determining the districts, whether the commission does it automatically or whether there's input.
No, I don't think that, we'll be able to answer that one, but we'll see.
Uh, I personally would be very interested to know if anybody's going to work on what the optimal size for a district is. I suspect it's larger than Sunset Ridge and smaller than Chicago.
I guess my, my question is, who's going to, you know, are there going to be resources to support the commission? Because I wouldn't feel good unless there was a big analyst or consulting firm doing the analysis, right? So it would be commission plus resources. Other questions?
I, I think if we're, we have to get to some kind of sense of the, of the community. Um, I mean, it's an awkward thing to necessarily survey, so I, so I don't know how to do that. But, um, this is one of the more impactful things that, uh, if, if our input has any value at all, you know, you can always argue, you know, we're one of seven hundred, um, and whatever they decide to do isn't going to be based on whether we say yea or nay. But assuming that we always take the position that what we say is important and people listen to us, um, then we should make sure on a topic that impacts our community. I mean, some of these other topics we've, we've had, you know, don't allow guns in our school, we wanted to take as a board a position, but, but frankly, nobody in our, in our school district was going to say, "That's a bad idea," um, or very few. And it didn't actually change anything in our community anyway, because we were never going to have guns in our school. This could dramatically impact people in our school district. And I think we need to have some, if we decide to go forward with it, we need to have some feel for how the community feels. And I don't know how to do that, because it's a really awkward question. But, um, I, I don't feel comfortable as a board saying that we know what the community would say on something that, that literally could impact house prices, um, you know, what schools your kids go to versus your, you know, kids of different ages, or you moved into, like I said, Ramona district and you end up in an Avoca district. I, I mean, it could be, it literally could be anything is the problem.
Okay, any other questions? And then we'll close this discussion and move on. Thank you, everyone, for a very interesting discussion. Thank you, Frank, for all your legwork.
Thank you, Frank.
Um, is there any other new business? Okay, great. So now I, we are going to adjourn to executive dis, uh, executive session to discuss negotiations and specific personnel. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session, the discussion, negotiations, and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, uh, motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call their role?
Tom, he's already?
Yes.
Frank, does he go?
Yes.
Amy, say it.
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes.
Don, Dernella?
Yes.
Aristotle?
Yes.
With the side of Ben?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is ten thirteen. I'm assuming people want to take a five-minute break?